Welcome our guests this evening. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time I go ahead and accept a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll move for approval.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A couple items I'd like to point out that we just approved. One is the resignation of Linda Meyer. She's been 11 years with the district. Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you worked at Central Hall, Evergreen, Victor Point, district office, correct? During that time. So, sorry to see you go, but I wish you the best. And another thing, another item we approved was the employment of Drew Hines, our new director of technology. Drew's back here, so welcome aboard. Okay, I'd like to open up with audience with visitors. Would anybody like to address the board this evening?
All right, switch. Oops.
What I, what I have, this is, I don't know if it's on or not, but possibly is more of an administrative thing, but it's a lot easier for me to talk to the administrators and the board at the same time. So, my idea is, and this probably not new, is to come up with a theme, an idea. Could be in any variety of topics, history, English, math, science, sociology, you name it. But a theme for the district, an educational theme for the district for the entire school year. And that all the kids, several times during the year, would have some activities associated with, with this theme. And so, to me, the idea would, would promote the team concept. It would, it would provide some unity within the district and there would be a common sense of accomplishment and learning. Now, I've gone back and forth on this, this, and you could do this every year. Okay, so that's basically the idea. Now, I struggled with whether to just throw this out and do it every year, or just come and say, you know, there's something happening a year from now that's just a super event. It's a once in a lifetime event and it provides an excellent opportunity for learning at all age levels. And Oregon happens to be in a location on the earth to experience this. And Oregon's going to have big time publicity and Silverton happens to be in the right spot for this to, to occur as well. So, if you haven't figured out what I'm talking about, August 21st in 2017, we will experience a total solar eclipse. And the path of the totality, and, and for us in Oregon, there might be another 100 years or so before we would experience a total eclipse. There will be partial eclipses, but if you don't have glasses that you can look at the sun, or welder's glasses, you would never know it's occurring. All right, but a total solar eclipse is a really unique event. And so, I'm sure there'll be all kinds of things going on. One thing that I do know is OMC is going, OMC, Oregon Museum of Science and Industry, is going to have a big time party at the, at the fairgrounds in Salem. And so, there'll be lots of things going on close to us at that particular time. The eclipse occurs, I don't know exactly the time, but 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning. So, our only risk here is weather, of course. And if you don't want to, if you're worried about the weather, John Day and Mitchell will have just about the same viewing as we have. But we will have, the maximum totality for this eclipse will be about two minutes. And Silverton will have about a minute and 45 seconds. So, that's a real unique situation. And so, in my way of thinking, that's the idea. It's, it's up to these folks. If, if something is to happen, it would seem to me that a committee to propose, to come up with activities throughout the year would need to be formed and educational part of it. If, if I were asked to serve in that committee, I'd be happy to give my input and ideas. So, anyway, that's my idea. I throw it on the board and take it and run with it if, if that's appropriate. So, and there are just all kinds of questions that kids can address. We don't need to take the time here to talk about that. So, unless you have some comments, questions?
Questions for Ray?
Okay?
Thank you.
And so, yeah.
By the way, I think I remember when I senior in high school, we had, had a lunar eclipse in the morning.
About the late 70s or, yeah, or 1980 there was, but I don't think it was total. It wasn't total. At least, at least where we were. Because just, well, just so happened, my brother and I were loading pigs that morning and it got pretty dim, but it didn't get dark. Okay?
Will it get, will it get dark with this one?
The total solar eclipse, it will be dark.
Wow, weird.
Yeah. Be dark. And one other comment, then I'll, I experienced one in Germany in 1999 and it was amazing how quickly, there's no twilight. It just, boom, gets dark, the birds quit chirping and I guess they went to the trees. And a minute and a half or so later, a little bit of light and boom, it's almost total. So, very unique experience.
Too bad it's not enough time to take a nap.
That's right. Well, for some people, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board this evening? All right, we had to move on then. Next item is the discussion of the purchase of 617 Grant Street. Got some information or pack about that? Any comments or discussion on that? It is an action item later this evening.
I think it's an opportunity the district shouldn't, we shouldn't pass up. I think that'd be a good, especially with the, you know, the board 20 years ago kind of had the foresight to see that. And I thought that would be beneficial to add that to the high school property. And I don't, I think if we can swing it, I think it'd be a wise thing for future use. Whether, whether we gravel and use it for parking, or whether, you know, future construction or whatever, I don't think it'd ever go wrong to get a piece of property right next to you like that. It's my opinion.
I, I agree. It's a natural addition to that site.
I agree.
Okay. Move on to administrator and staff reports. Andy, got several things on here.
Yeah, we have a few things. I'm going to split, split the responsibilities with Linda here in just a moment when we cover the district goals report. But a few updates for you. Silverton Middle School project, as I've shared with the board in the past, we are making progress on a daily basis. Truly, we look through there daily and we see things that are different. And we now have rooms that are prepared, floors are sealed, walls are painted. We still have some fire devices to install, but all the conduit electrical and everything is there. We definitely have a couple of rooms which are going, we're going to cut it very close. We're going to be ready. I give you my assurance of that. But we're going to be cutting it close again. I think as we fully understand every corner that we, we take on that, we discover, we discover asbestos that we either didn't realize was there, or the scope of the survey when we looked into that building wasn't wide enough simply as a cost-saving measure. So, we've discovered a couple more rooms that do need some full abatement. We also discovered the kitchen area. While we knew there was asbestos in the flooring in there, where we already have it scheduled to be abated, but we just discovered today or late last week that there are two layers of asbestos flooring in that kitchen, not just one, which increases the cost in order to mitigate that, that kind of stuff. So, as you can imagine, some of that is resulting in increase in costs. While I believe the change orders are slowing down, they are still, they are still increasing. And I, I believe we're going to land at that 14, 15 percent mark when all is said and done. If I can keep to that threshold, I'm going to feel, I think, as good as possible about the overage on this project. So, but we are moving ahead. We just had a status walk-through today with about eight or 10 people, all with different responsibilities related to the project and to be certain that we're all communicating well with each other. So, look forward to that continuing. Just a couple of brief updates that are not on the agenda. The Scotts Mills seismic rehabilitation project is nearly completed. We had, Lauren's been checking frequently on the project and the contractor has done an exceptional job out there as well. We fully anticipate that that'll be completed by mid-August. We're already beginning to give indications to teachers about when they can start coming back in there as well. So, that's, that's great news. And you'll see some, some very nice improvements out there. And I believe Kirsten Jorgensen will be setting up some kind of an open house for that for folks. Tom, I know you and family and others in the Scotts Mills area will be very interested in that. We have a small project going on at Prattham School with the replacement of septic system and drain field out there. As, as the board is aware, there's been an interest by the parent-teacher organization at Prattham to add bathrooms to the gymnasium at Prattham, again funded as a gift from, from the Prattham PTC. They were able to acquire the funding to expand the drain field in order for that to occur. And that project began today and will be finished by the middle of August as well. So, that'll be a great addition to Prattham School, which is pretty limited in its restrooms anyway. Let me see. The district goals report, each one of you received a copy of that this evening. And we have, you identified two goals during, I believe it was September or October of last year. The first one being apply a strategic visioning plan as a basis for comprehensive district-wide decision-making. Performance indicators of the plan will be used as measures of effectiveness. And what I can tell you is that the strategic visioning plan, and again, I don't think it's any surprise to any of you, has been an incredible directional tool, like a compass for this district over the last two years. You refined it a little bit last year with some minor modifications, but the, the document was applied as a decision-making tool at the district and school levels. I can tell from experience, it was used for in-service planning, professional development, teachers especially. We needed it to support grant applications, technology planning efforts. It was a large part of our recent technology planning efforts, school and district planning efforts, budget development, funding decisions, collaboration, grant activities, your own discussion and related decision-making. And those are only a few examples that occurred over the year. So, it continues to be a strong presence in this district and I will be recommending that if you don't identify some even modification of this goal, but something related to the strategic plan in your upcoming goals, that you identify some other way to prioritize your attention to that. Because I think the second we get, it comes off the radar, we don't use it so much anymore. And in this district right now, I believe this plan, especially over what we've experienced the last, say, three to five years anyway, this plan has proven to be a valuable resource to keep this district focused and moving ahead. So, I'm going to turn it over to Linda because there are some specific measures on there, goals, that have some metrics to them.
So, we included three specific components to goal one, and those included, the first measure being 100 percent of our students being on track to graduate. And we used multiple measures to look at that. So, the district kindergarten assessment, which has been in place now, we've administered that seven years in a row. The year-end average score for all kindergarten students was 95 percent mastery. So, that is a great, great resolution to our first year going full-time, having full-day kindergarten. And you'll notice that that's more than three percentage points where we landed in the year previous. So, we typically have been somewhere in the 91 and a half up to 93 percent within the past four to five years, but have never, never come close to that 95 percent mark. So, very, very pleased with those kindergarten results. In addition, we used the STAR assessment and we used a particular measure on the STAR assessment, which is a targeted growth. And that takes each child's individual score and sets a year's target for that child. So, based upon where they come at the beginning of the year, what would be an expected data point for them to end the year? So, essentially, we're measuring, did that student make one year's of growth, one year's worth of academic growth in one year's time? So, I want you to be mindful that those numbers then are not correlated with achievement. So, we simply in this data points are telling you whether each student made growth as would be expected for where they started the year. And we do that on purpose because one, our statement is cultivating character and academic growth for each student. So, I want you to be careful just because when you look at that, 62 percent of students hit their growth targets in reading and 66 percent of students hit their growth targets in math, that's a different number than us saying how many passed grade-level math or grade-level reading. So, I just, I'm clarifying that so that, those are two different numbers that we would be looking at. So, when we look at growth, we've got just about two-thirds of our students making a year's growth in a year's time. Let me anticipate the question that will come with that. The students who are typically, we're seeing are not making a year's worth of growth in a year's time are upper-level students. So, we see those numbers indicate and shift pretty quickly when we look at achievement scores and that we continue to have very, very good achievement scores, kids that are above the mark of where they need to be on grade level. But we want to, I continue to identify specific strategies to make sure that even our highest level of learners are making a full year's growth in a year. So.
I don't think that's been too, that's, that's somewhat varial over the last.
Not new, not new information.
As far as I can remember.
Yeah, definitely.
They top out.
Right, but we want to see what we can do about that.
Yes.
Yeah, definitely. Second page, again, great numbers for our ninth graders. So, students who completed ninth grade in June of 2016, 95.3 percent of those students successfully completed a full six credits. And that is more than two percentage points higher than where we were the spring previous. So, again, great, great numbers coming out of Silverton High School. That's worth celebrating for that ninth grade class. So, kudos to them. Moving into the attendance goal. Now, remember, we set a very rigorous goal here in making a statement that every student will attend 95 percent or more school days. As you'll recall, that's a shift from the way we have monitored data in the past, where we typically have looked at school averages or district average attendance rates. So, you know, the state sets a goal that 94 and a half percent of students will be in attendance. That's a different measure than this again. So, we are saying every student will be at school 95 percent or more days. So, we did not, obviously, we didn't meet the every student, that would be 100 percent, but let me tell you where we did land. So, 95 percent is equivalent to nine absences or less. And so, we had 54 percent students hit that mark last year and we've increased that to 61 percent this year. So, good growth there. Still not where we would like to see those numbers, but pleased with that percentage increase. Similarly, we hit very, very hard the concept of attendance during that first month of school. You need to be here, you need to set positive habits, set your routines for getting up in the morning and getting here. And we saw some increase there as well. Last September 2015, I apologize, 2014, we hit 57 percent target for perfect attendance in September. And this fall, we got that up to 62 percent, perfect attendance during the month of September. So.
Linda, has that changed since we've implemented this? So, the younger classes, are they hitting those marks versus the older kids that were already in the routine of missing?
So, it's interesting, and I can pull those numbers and we can email those to you. I have all the individual data. It's not as big of a spread as I would have anticipated. So, you do spread somewhere from upper 60s to lower 70s in K-1, 2, down to 50s, mid-50s in high school. But it's not a drastic, you know, it's not, 85 percent of our first graders are here every day and it's, it's not as drastic of a spread as you would think it might be. So.
I also heard maybe hearsay that, that kids were showing up sick more often than last year, too, because there's such an emphasis on staying in school. If that's the case, do we need to reevaluate this?
Right. I'm not sure, Wally, how we would explore that. We do, you know, we do code absences depending on how and why students are absent. Is it an excused appointment? Is it an illness? But it would be difficult, I would venture to guess, to measure whether we have kids that are more sick because someone's coming to school with a cold or ill and, you know, are we infecting? I don't know. We, we could certainly collect anecdotal data, but, you know, that might be difficult to quantify. Yeah. And then that final indicator is 100 percent of teachers will meet or exceed the standard for student engagement. This work is something we're continue to be proud of. So, this is the work aligned with the Danielson framework and the, what we look for when we are doing classroom observations and providing feedback to classroom teachers. So, teachers at the end of the year are rated on a one through four scale. And so, we are looking for teachers who are rated as proficient or distinguished. And we increased those ratings from 80.2 percent in the previous school year up to 82.8 percent. So, continuing to see some positive growth in that indicator as well. Questions about any of those related to goal one?
Just as a reminder, your strategic plan is a five-year plan and we've just completed year two. And so, the kind of growth that we've seen, we've seen, while we love to see it higher, the fact is, we are growing and we'll continue to use the targets that we have. So, five years out, it'd be great to think that we can get to one or more of these achievement goal levels. Hope so. So, we're trying for it. And then finally, the, the final goal, the second one, is related to facility transition efforts. Again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this one because you've heard a lot about this over the course of the last number of months, especially with monthly updates. But I am pleased that we, we have nearly completed this goal. Many of, many of them have been completed prior to now because they had to do with collaboration with the city of Silverton, with the fire district, with professionals. I was very pleased with the effort that was put in by our district staff, both at the district level and school staff, for the programming efforts for the middle school and for Mark Twain. And literally to put a plan together that shifted a third of the students in this school in, literally over the course of a couple of months. It was quite an undertaking and while we're not there yet, we will be in a very short amount of time. And I'm pleased that we've been able to, to achieve that. I think, you know, if there's anything that, you know, we, we can say that, that maybe could have been a different achievement related to this, I mean hindsight is always 20/20, right? And there are plenty of things that I think we can reflect upon. And I'll be encouraging the board, I'll be doing that with my staff as well, to, to say, first of all, let's anticipate that we'll never have to do this again. But if we have anything similar in this district in the future, I think we can always review what we did and to see where can we improve and where can we do better next time. With that said, the second to this, in addition to the middle school and the changes at Mark Twain is the availability of Eugene Field School being listed on the market. And again, you've been very attentive to that as well, but I continue to be pleased that, that the ball continues to roll in, in forward progress related to Eugene Field sale. And that we'll see what happens in two months when the due diligence period is finished and see where we land with that. Anyway, lots of great progress. I think these were two very good goals. As we wrap this up, I would encourage you to begin thinking about what some of your targeted goals will be for next year. My recommendation will be again that you limit them to maybe two. I think those really, really work well when it comes to targeting your efforts. And I will throw out in addition to whatever interest you may have, we'll continue this discussion in, in September. But I do believe the strategic visioning plan needs to be used for something to keep your focus. And then second to this is knowing that in a very short amount of time, meaning a year or two, I believe it's going to be time to be revisiting your, some of your facility planning efforts again. And you actually made that statement in approving the resolution to close Eugene Field School a couple of years ago. But in order to have adequate information for that, I, I do believe there's some merit to giving some consideration to a demographic study of this school district, something that we haven't done for about 10 or 12 years, which is a bit of a crystal ball look at the future to see where the, the growth spots, trends will occur. We've seen some interesting growth in the Victor Point area. I think some of the same is happening in the Scotts Mills area, some interesting growth in town. We've seen that some of the new housing in the area are not bringing students. Our enrollment has remained relatively flat even though the enrollment, excuse me, the population of the district continues to increase. And I don't have a full grasp of that because that's not my area of specialty. So, I think it may be helpful for you to bring someone in to help us maybe be a little better educated about what this district may look like from a population or demographic standpoint, three, five, even 10 years from now. Especially as you on the cusp of more planning efforts for your facilities. Food for thought. Okay, so, there you go.
Andy, in the interest of continuous improvement, maybe would it be worthwhile for the administrative staff to sit down after all, all the shuffling's done, kind of do a lessons learned on what went right, what went wrong, kind of documents and those things and put it in the file? So, down the road when we do do a facility improvement, we have to move, move kids, move staff, whatever, we at least have something to start with and something to look at and start, start a discussion with.
Very well said, Wally. That's exactly what I was going to say. So.
Okay. And then also going back to Silverton Middle School, when, when can staff start accessing the classrooms? Do you have an idea yet?
The, the office area and the media center will be available on next Monday. Some classrooms, the floors are cured, I don't know what the term is, Lauren, but they're sealed enough or whatever that they'll be able to have some access by next Monday as well. And so, that's, the entire building will not, but again, a couple of classrooms will be very close. But I think we'll, staff will be in there definitely before in-service. The majority of staff will be able to access their space before in-service, which is. Oh, and I had one more topic to report on. I'd like to see if you receive a copy of this at your station this evening. And that is the school lead-in water testing results. Just as a quick reminder, remember, we have public water systems at the majority of our schools, our rural schools, and those are monitored on a, on a monthly basis, multiple times throughout the year with very specific testing that needs to occur from different receptacles in the, in the building and so forth, constantly monitored. And those results of all of our K-8 rural schools can be found, we'll put this on the website as well, at yourwater.org.gov. It's a state of Oregon website that we require to report all of our water through, I believe, Marion County Health Department. Is that where they go, Lauren?
Honestly, I have not done any reporting. This is, this is new area for me, so.
I believe we send everything to Marion County Health and they in turn submit everything to the state of Oregon. But I took a look at the results recently and, well, and constantly, if we have any increase of concerning items, hard water items, nitrates, lead, anything of that sort, we know about it instantly at that time because that's a public water system. The same public water system and the regulation occurs with each one of the municipalities, so the city of Scotts Mills and the city of Silverton. Those, that, that water quality is tested where it goes out into the city's systems. So, what we did in this case is we took Robert Frost, Mark Twain School and then Scotts Mills School and we tested all of the, not all of the, but the bulk of the water, all the water faucets and all of the cooking access faucets and a number of sinks in each one of those schools, over 50, 55, I believe, total of the three schools. And I'm pleased to say that, that every one of the water tests came in below the federal threshold for lead, with one exception, and that is in room 13 at Mark Twain School, where we found a slightly elevated level of lead. And knowing that all of Mark Twain School, every other faucet came in under, led us to believe that we had something in that, in that fixture. And so, we've replaced the fixture and Lauren and the staff are testing that water again, but that sink has been shut down and was rarely used for drinking water in the first place. But I'm pleased to tell you that those results have come back where we had hoped and that's wonderful news. We did not test Silverton High School since that's such a new facility. And if the board had an interest in that, we could surely do that. But I'm not, I don't believe that there's a need based upon the information we've received. And we'll be testing Silverton Middle School water again, probably closer to the end of this month. We've replaced quite a large portion of plumbing in that building, so I believe we're just going, we're going to be just fine. But we'll want to test all of the fixtures in that building as well.
So, Andy, when we test the water at the rural schools and wells, do we test each fixture as well, just like we did here?
The fixture, the source of the water moves throughout the school. So, every fixture isn't tested every other month, Wally. But, you know, we take it from this sink one month and that sink the next month.
So, eventually, they all get tested?
They all get tested at some point in time. Over the course of. They all get tested at some point in time, over the course of a few years.
Just want to make sure we weren't testing as water's coming into the building and not fixture level.
No, they actually have very specific measuring protocols, like you're not to let the water run. You're supposed to, you know, immediately and X number of milliliters that you have to submit and all of that. So.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Andy? Right, move on to financial reports. Steve?
Good evening. The packet tonight includes June 30th, a financial statement for the general fund as well as the schools and as well as a July financial report for the general fund. We do not have a fund balance report for the other funds as we're still closing the books. And we'll have a preliminary year-end as well as fiscal year activity through August at the next board meeting. But we are still closing the books. We still have a few bills floating in and doing some reconciliations. And we have our auditors coming at the end of next week, so things are coming together pretty quickly. I am happy to report, though, as we focus on the general fund tonight, that, again, this is preliminary and there will be some changes. I don't anticipate material changes, but our, right now, our projected ending fund balance at June 30th, 2016, for the general fund has risen from 3.8 million to 4.8 million. So that is now 13% of budgeted expenditures in the general fund and 14% of our actual expenditures for '15, '16. So more, some of that came from revenue exceeding forecasts, not by much, but more of it came from expenditures coming in less than forecast. And there's various reasons for that, I believe. We did have a heavy amount of retirements last summer. We had some younger, you know, teachers coming in that cost less. And I believe our average teacher cost was less than what was budgeted last year. Obviously, the pers rates came down, which we had planned for, but it probably also drug the average teacher cost down some. A lot of timing issues, things like that. It's also important to remember that as our ending fund balance increases, that a higher percentage really of that also now is belonging to the schools because a lot of the schools have been planning for the new PE requirement, for example, coming in 17, 18, and trying to save for that, as well as the increased pers rates that are coming in the 17, 19 by any, which is something we're all trying to do, school by school and district-wide. So I believe that, you know, we've been targeting the 12 to 15% range. We're there right now. It'd be great if we could hit that 15% by this time next year, June 30th, 2017, and be ready for the pers rates to go up on July 1st, 2017. We will find out what those increased pers rates will be in September. It'll be, it should be, it's supposed to be announced at the September pers board meeting. So that'll give us a lot better idea of the financial impact specifically to our school district. So.
That'll be good. Do you recall what our carryover was from last year?
Yeah, we were, our ending fund balance last year was just over 3.8 million, so we've grown by a million dollars. And we did budget the beginning fund balance, for our beginning fund balance for this year at 4.5. So the 4.8 exceeds that. Could be a little less, could be a little bit more. When it's all said and done, we go through our audit and see where we end up, but we'll provide updates as we have them.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? All right, Mark Cannon.
Well, I'm going to discuss some ELL figures with you tonight. And I'm about five weeks into this, so bear with me. Some of this is relatively new and Dandy Stevens will certainly, I'm hoping, help with questions if I can't answer those for you. This information that I'm going to give you is from the 14, 15 school year, so it's a, the data is a year behind. Our district served 205 ELL students. And of those 205 students, 90% of those students are designated economically disadvantaged. Of the $593,724 that was allocated for Silver Falls School District, we spent $562,490, which is 95% of the revenue, providing direct services to students. 100% of those funds were used on instructional services for our ELL students. One note to make, our district is a little bit unique in that we try and maintain the ability for students to go to school in their home, our home resident schools. And so that provides a little bit of a staffing issue because if we have one ELL student at Evergreen and they want to stay at Evergreen, staffing that makes it difficult. So we do have people that are spread throughout the district in odd configurations. But we do really try and honor parents and families to be able to go to the schools of their choice. 21% of our current ELL students are additionally designated as migrant students. And 12% of our former ELL students are designated as migrant. And when I say former, that means they've been exited from ELL status. 12 students declined ELL services over the district for various reasons. Some families just choose not to utilize the service and we honor that. Current ELL students in the five-year cohort, there were eight students, three graduated, and that's 38% with the state average at 61%. So we have some work to do there. And I'm not exactly sure, I should know who those students are. And that's one of the things that I'm going to follow up on to find out if those students left the district or because they didn't drop out. We had a 0% dropout rate out of this population. So that's one of the things that I'll be following up on to find out exactly how that number works and how it's computed. Of the former ELLs, 26, we had 26 students and 18 graduated, which is 69%. And the state average is 80%. 17% of our ELL students are also designated as students with disabilities. This provides a unique circumstance in whether or not the students' needs are language-based or special needs-based. And sometimes that's difficult to tell which one is the main factor in determining what they struggle with. 21% of our ELL students are chronically absent, defined as attending less than 90%. And when you've got one in five of your ELL students missing more than 10% of the school days, that to me is a factor to really focus in on. This past year, the focus was on creating standards-based report card. And there was a, there was a separate report card for these students, better partnering with special ed and alternative assessment systems. So we'll probably, I haven't met with Danny to discuss whether or not those were short-term goals or whether or not those should be continued into the subsequent school year. But one of the things that I want to focus on after looking at this data is definitely the attendance issue. When we've got one in five of our students missing that, those number of days of school, that makes it very difficult to meet our academic goals with those students. Questions?
Do you have ideas how to attack that?
Actually, one of the things that I'm going to discuss with Mrs. Drescher when I see her tomorrow in our admin meeting is kind of getting some ideas on how to address that K8. Obviously, nine through 12, we added a, an attendance monitor position for this upcoming school year for the high school. And that'll be interesting to see how that carries out into the nine through 12 ELL students. That person is a Spanish speaker and I'm really excited to see what kind of impact she can have at the high school. And depending on the outcome of how that works, we may be looking at something like that, K through eight. Attendance to me is really the key. If we can get them here, we can graduate them. If they're not here, it makes it really tough.
All right. Any questions for Mark?
Thanks, guys.
Can we move on to board reports? Are we having board reports this evening? Well, I'd just like to say, if you haven't seen the football field, it's pretty sharp.
Looks really nice.
It's stunning. So I understand that the Fox Foundation is going to have a grand opening at some point. And did they practice on, or did they have the football camp today at the high school?
The camp has begun and I believe, I did see a couple of balls being kicked around out there today. Equipment is now off the field. I believe they're finished.
Is it done? Is it all?
I believe so. Yeah, they still have some fencing to put up and steel plates to move and goalposts to finish.
But the turf parts done?
It appears so.
Yeah, you walk up to that and you go, wow.
Yeah, it looks really nice.
Really sharp. Okay, any correspondence? Okay, we wouldn't open it up with the second audience, with visitors. Would anybody else like to address the board this evening?
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
I don't think, Andy, at some point in time, when you just say what the city did in respect to the zone, Eugene Field, because you were involved in that in the executive session, but it's all about.
Would you like to do it right now?
Go ahead.
Okay. And just to clarify, and for the sake of the audience and the board, we're actually not going to be discussing anything public in executive session. It's some confidential information related to the process. But what Ray is referring to is the city council met with a monthly meeting last week and they did consider an application which originated from the city council to convert the zoning of the existing three and a half acre Eugene Field property from downtown commercial fringe to downtown commercial. And as the board is well aware, that the school board has made very clear our opposition to that, both at the planning commission level and the city council level, and we continue to voice that opposition. And through their procedures, ultimately, the city council voted on a three, a motion was made for consideration of the full zoning change and the motion failed with three counselors in favor, four counselors opposed. So the entire three and a half acres remains downtown commercial fringe, which is the existing zone, the zoning of, existing zoning of the property, other than the public overlay, which we have had for almost 100 years. So everything remains the same. You bet.
Another thing we might want to add, though, is the due diligence period has been extended because of this, the questions about the change in zoning.
Correct. That's through September 30th.
All right, go ahead and move on to action items. We have two this evening. First is approved resolution number 88, 2016, purchase of property at 617 Grant Street. Is there a motion?
I've moved for approval. Second?
Move and second. Any further discussion? Falls in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item is approval of the contractor for construction of the covered play area at Mark Twain Elementary School. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because this is news for you, and I do feel compelled to clarify this. This is a value for the construction. You've already approved the purchase of the structure itself from PBS out of Woodburn. This is actually for constructing the structure in addition to extending the concrete. There's also some drainage that's part of this project. And that quote came in at $148,300. We had actually four contractors where bids were sought. You can see the responses that we received. We received no response from one. And two of the contractors were very clear in that due to the, just the heavy workload that they even anticipate through January or later, that they would not be able to meet the needs of our project. I think it's also fair to say that that, this amount caught my attention because we did not anticipate this high of a mark. We were actually thinking more in the 60,000 to 80,000 range. And so we missed the mark on this one. And part of that is the economy, I believe. This is required to be a prevailing wage project. So part of it is prevailing wage and in some cases, as Herb, you probably know, prevailing wage projects can even be double what you expect. But we should have, we should have anticipated that. So I'm sorry that this high of a figure is, has to be presented to you after my conversation with a couple of contractors. I don't believe that we're going to see this number go down six, even six months from now, or eight months from now, or a year from now. I think if anything, it's going to continue to be up there and continue to go up. So I recommend this approval. And my only concern is that it's much higher than what we had anticipated.
Thanks, Andy. Is there a motion?
I move for approval.
Move? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, move and second. Discussion?
Yeah. My personal opinion would be to hold off, Andy. I know that, but when you only have one bid, I don't feel comfortable with that. I think we could put it out to bid again October, November, and it wouldn't hurt us at all. I think you'd free up a lot of contractors who are really busy. And if it's the same price, then we know we're.
Sure.
But I don't feel comfortable. I mean, it's like double or more than we anticipated. So I would recommend not to approve it.
And of course, I'll follow the lead of the board on that. My only, my only concern with that is we did hesitate a little bit in anticipation with a month, almost a month and a half delay of even constructing this into the school year in hopes of capturing some of that potential for an increase. That's why we didn't go out for bid earlier this summer. With that said, though, we, my concern is that we need a covered play area at Mark Twain School. And while I believe we could function there if the fall is nice and the weather is good, it would take some creative efforts on the part of Greg Cots, the new principal of Mark Twain and the staff there in order to use that gymnasium, or use that campus without a covered play area prior to the onset of next winter. So that's my only concern, Herb.
Yeah.
I understand where you're coming from.
Yeah. That was like way out of line, in my opinion.
What the contractors tell you, Andy, about, I mean, they specifically said they didn't think it would wait in six months or eight months. They didn't think it would make any difference on the price of construction.
Correct. And again, that's coming from contractors. And so I understand there's a certain, you know, filter on there that a person has to realize. But at the same time, you know, hearing that consistent message from a couple of contractors, and they're looking in their crystal ball and saying they've got work, they've got lots of work. In fact, they even spoke with the representative from PBS over the weekend, saw him at Homewood Amport Days. And he was very clear, saying if you have any change in your scheduling of this project, please let him know right away because they are being flooded with orders at PBS. He says, "We're now scheduling into December and January for construction of these things because so many orders are coming in." So.
And that's the structure itself.
That's the structure itself. And of course, somebody has to erect those structures, right? So I think the reality is, I don't know. Herb, it's your world. You would know better than I do. But at the same time, we've got the risk of not having a covered play area at an elementary school with 330 little kids.
This was put out to bid pretty late, so.
I mean, this sounds kind of hokey, but I don't know what the cost of having one of like those big tent companies come for just the winter, just to have a covered play area. To, I don't know. That's a lot of money for just erecting. That's not the purchase of the building. That's not the purchase of the building.
That's all the concrete as well, concrete forms...
Yeah.
And excavation, adding a 14-foot by 100-foot pad, or 12 by 100-foot pad.
And that's 100, how many square feet is that, Andy?
It'll be 100, about 100 by 70 when all is said and done. About 7,000, 30,000.
7,000, so...
It's a pretty big pad.
Yeah, that's $28,000 for the concrete. I don't know, I usually don't know, but I have to on this one, I understand that.
Yeah, I understand the price thing, I also understand the concern about where you're going to let 300K kindergarten through second graders run around during recess, too, so I don't know.
Yeah, I'm kind of a Tim on this. I mean, I, there's been enough disruption in town with all the shuffling, I want it done.
I mean, the Mark Twain gym isn't real big and real conducive to, I assume that's going to be their lunch area, too?
Actually, they'll be, they'll have some indoor play area, they'll be using the cafeteria again for lunches, but they'll be using a portion of the gym floor for lunch as well.
I've heard space is already a bit tied up there, so I don't, that's my, that's my, that's my concern, is just functioning into the fall and winter, because, you know, realistically, if we left it, waited on it, we wouldn't have anything there probably all winter, would we? If it's, you know, by the type we wait, a few months to bid it out...
It'd be spring.
Yeah, which is, that's my concern, too.
Let's go ahead and vote. Halt in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Yes, I did.
And I did. And that passes.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, you need four. It's, you need a majority of your, of your board.
Well, not just what's here.
Not just that those present.
Okay, so it doesn't?
Doesn't pass. Okay. All right, we'll take a look at other options, and we'll look at...
Yeah, and I think, I think we ought to rebid it for, go up in March, or some of those, what do you think?
And we purchased the building already, right, Andy?
We have.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, so we have a building that's being delivered on October 1st.
So does that just sit there, then? I mean...
I don't know. I'm assuming so.
It's showing up. Okay, figure it out.
That's a good question, yeah, where are we going to put that thing?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I mean, we'll, I'll have to reel Lauren in and figure that out and see what that means for us.
Okay, we may need it.
I don't know what it means to store one of those things, it's...
It's metal.
It's metal, correct, so it's...
It's not that big of a deal.
I don't care.
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to next action item, to approve CJ Hans from Salem as contractor for removal and replacement of mixed-air heating units, two of them at Silverton High School, in the amount of $31,346. Do you have a motion?
I move for approval.
Moved, is a second?
Second.
Move and second, any further discussion? Halt in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, this time I'll go ahead and adjourn. Our regular meeting will move into executive session, per RS 192 to 660, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions for Eugene Field property. Thanks for coming.